We'll call this meeting to order. Dr. Gabriel will be joining us within the hour. So Ms. Tanner, please call the rule.
Basine.
Present.
Kamson.
Present.
Clanton.
Present.
Gabriel's coming soon. Jordan.
Here.
Martin.
Here. Okay, first on our item, we have, under Academic Affairs, collective bargaining, we have Mr. Andy Fox, one of our city attorneys, and he's here to present the updates that general legislation update that took, what was I going to say? I'm sorry, I'm stumbling in my words, that took effect on May 1st of this year.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Legislative update, there it goes. More in the nature of a legislative update as far as what the General Assembly has done in terms of public sector collective bargaining that applies both to local governments and to local school boards. Prior to May 1st of this month, just a few days ago, there was a general prohibition in the Commonwealth on the recognition of any collective bargaining unit by a public entity. So basically, no ability to recognize a union and engage in collective bargaining as those terms have generally been understood in the Commonwealth of Virginia and many other jurisdictions throughout the United States as well. The General Assembly passed a bill in 2020 basically reversing that, so removing that prohibition. With the onset of COVID, as the 2020 session played out, it was decided to delay the implementation of that legislation until May 1st of this year, so as I said just a few days ago. So we've had a year knowing that this legislation had been passed to consider its impact and what we need to do about, what we need to know about it, what we need to do about it. The legislation itself is extremely simple, and all it really does is it does a few things. It removes the prohibition that I spoke of before. So it now allows for a local governing body, including a local school board, to recognize a bargaining unit and engage in public bargaining with a group of or groups of their employees. It lays out a very basic procedure by which a school board can, of its own accord, of its own initiative, can make a decision to allow collective bargaining for some groups of employees, for all groups of employees, anything along that spectrum. And in the absence of such an action, it creates a mechanism by which a group, a self-identified group of employees can bring a certification to the board that 50% of their members desire that the school board allow them to become a collective bargaining unit and engage in bargaining with the school board. When that certification is received, it creates, it starts a 120-day period, by the end of which the school board must take a vote to either allow collective bargaining or to not allow it. The school board can elect, can opt to allow collective bargaining for the group that has presented the certification, as well as any additional groups that it determines it should include in the authorization at that time. So basically, as I said, the school board can act on its own, or the school board can act in response to a certification that's received through this process. In no instance is the school board obligated to allow collective bargaining. It's always the school board's option. So the school board has the option whether to take it up on its own, to take it up in response to a certification that's received, but ultimately, the vote can always be no. There's no set of circumstances under which the school board is obligated to allow collective There is a limitation, as you can imagine, that the school board cannot, even if it does allow collective bargaining, it cannot delegate the budgetary process to that process. So the school board, any collective bargaining that it allows must be subject to the school board retaining its budgetary authority. And there are a number of other authorities that the school board has. You know, school boards, as Mr. Cloud, I'm sure, has briefed you, on many occasions, school boards in Virginia have very broad legislative authority, executive authority, judicial authority even. The statute does not clarify whether, whether any of those functions can be legislated away. Our opinion would be, in the absence of such clarification, those, those functions cannot be bargained away. So, so those would be retained by the school board, subject to, subject to other, other issues that could be collectively bargained. Just a few things that, that the statute does not do, because the statute is fairly short, I pretty much told you everything it does do. It removes the prohibition, it creates the, the ability of employee groups to petition the local government or the school board to make a decision on collective bargaining. And it does, that's basically what it does do. Important things that it doesn't do, it doesn't change the legal prohibition on striking by public employee groups. So it does not open the door for public employee unions to go on strike. That could change, any of this could change over time from year to year. There was a bill in the General Assembly this year to allow teachers to strike, so that would be an exception to this no-striking rule. That bill did not go anywhere, so it is still the current law that, that no public employee may strike in Virginia, including school board employees. It does not change Virginia's status as a right-to-work state. So even if you allow, if you decide to recognize a bargaining unit, the, the employees cannot be compelled to join that union, the unit. They may be bound by the terms of the collective bargaining agreement, but they cannot be required to be a member of the unit in order to be employed by the school board. That's referred to as, again, as I said, as a right-to-work state. That has not changed. The statute does not require that a, an established group represent the employees. So an established union, a national-level union, a local, a state union, the statute does contemplate that a group of employees could self-organize, present themselves, and be recognized as a bargaining unit. However, the statute does require, if you do receive a certification, so a petition from a group of employees that say that they want you to allow them to collectively bargain, these, these national labor, not, established union groups, I don't want to call them national groups, but established union groups have to be given the opportunity to participate in that consideration. So they have to be given an opportunity to come and give their opinion on whether collective bargaining with that group should be allowed or not, presumably under the auspices of their existing organization. However, it's not required to, to involve a recognized union as, as the representative of a, of a bargaining group. The statute doesn't set forth really any other guidelines in terms of the scope of what may be bargained. So the, the general scope of what can be bargained would be anything from, of course, wages, benefits, retirement benefits, conditions of employment, you know, everything that, everything that pertains to employment. The statute does not put any, any limitations on that. As I said, there may be limitations from other parts of the state code that would sort of knock out certain things that can't be, that can't be subject to collective bargaining. So it would be a question, for instance, if you're, if the state mandated grievance procedure is something that could be deviated from in a collective bargaining agreement, we think probably not. There's, there's also been legislation, legislation floated dealing with that, but it hasn't, it also hasn't been passed, or, you know, it may come back in future years. The legislation doesn't establish how you resolve disputes that may arise between a bargaining unit and the school board. So it kind of leaves the door open to what would happen if you have entered into collective bargaining, you, you can't resolve certain issues, you have to figure out some way to resolve those. That's generally done through a, through some kind of third-party arbitrator, or mediator, or some combination of those. So if you decided to go down this route, you have, that was another thing you would have to consider. You basically have to add a, several new staff positions to administer collective, collective bargaining process to provide that impasse-breaking or dispute-breaking or dispute resolution process. Who pays for that? What's the cost of it? And how do you maintain the fairness of it? It doesn't establish any requirements as far as what an actual collective bargaining agreement contains, or the length of it, or what it doesn't contain, or how it may be updated or amended over time. So that's all completely left to the local jurisdictions to determine if they determine this is something they want to do. So that's basically a summary of what the law is, what it does, what it doesn't do. And as I said, it's extremely broad. There's not, there are not very many specific guidelines set forth. The main ones you need to be aware of, of course, are that you maintain your authority over this issue. Ultimately, no matter what happens, you can take it up on your own, or it can, you can be required to make a vote against or for collective bargaining if you do receive a certification from an employee group. So the things you would need to consider are the things that I've, you know, been talking about in the past few minutes. If you decide to do collective bargaining, you would have to basically set up how, you know, how to do it, who can do it, what things are on the table, what things are not, how disputes would be resolved, and how you manage that process on a multi-year basis. So generally, these, these contracts tend to be in the three-to-five-year range. We try, you know, we, when we deal with them, we try to limit the circumstances by which they can be reopened, because the negotiation process is time-consuming, can be, you know, can cause friction in the workplace. It's something that, you know, everyone needs to know what the rules are before they get into it. And then there, as I said, there, this is an evolving issue, you know, the door's just been opened to it in the Commonwealth. Very few guidelines or guardrails have been applied to how it is to be done, so everyone's going to be sort of figuring it out as they go. The City of Alexandria has passed a very comprehensive collective bargaining ordinance in the last few weeks that basically opens the door just about as wide as you can to what can be bargained, what, you know, how many, you know, what employee groups they will recognize. That's something else you would need to consider. The more bargaining units you have, the more negotiation you have to do, the more contracts you have to deal with. Some larger localities have over 30 bargaining units that go through this process. Most, most people that we're talking to around Virginia are looking at somewhere in the four-to-five to nine bargaining unit range. You would look at, you know, what, what is, what is the nature of my employees and what they do? Do they naturally, naturally fall into groups? You know, you don't want to over-include, you don't want to under-include. But there are, when you get into the, into federal labor relations, there are a lot of rules and court decisions that guide you in how to determine what's an appropriate unit and what, what's an appropriate unit and what isn't. We don't have any of that yet, so we may develop that over time. The General Assembly may step in to provide that guidance, but for now, we just have to go with what, what the school board thinks is appropriate, both in terms of whether you open the door to this and how you do it. So to the extent that that's not very helpful, that is where we stand legislatively and legally on the issue of collecting, collective bargaining at this time. Happy to try to answer. Any questions?
Any questions or comments for Mr. Fox? Basine, go ahead.
So, so with, with, with that legislation in mind, what do you perceive are the next steps that we, you know, moving forward, you know, as we move through this process? Do you, is the next step that our two governing bodies, you know, kind of come together to figure out how we move forward, or, and how our, how our planning process is going to be around this? I mean, I guess that's the big question, is how, what are the next steps?
I think I'm live. I think the, the next step is for you to determine whether you want to change the status quo. And that if you want to change it, how you'd like to change it.
Okay.
Yeah, the statute doesn't contemplate that, that, you know, a school board and a locality work together on this issue. They, they can attack it separately. Realistically, from a budgeting standpoint, as you indicated, you know, there would need to be some, some collaboration, because it will affect budgets wherever, wherever it is implemented, it will, it will have budgetary impact, and there will be questions of, of authority on what, you know, where the lines of authority are and what things need to be reserved to the, to the, whichever governing authority it is. As Bernard said, this does not require any change to the status quo. So as I understand, you have a MOU process that, that has been working for the school board for a long time. Nothing in this obligates any change to that. So you could continue with that as it is if you feel that it, that it satisfies, you know, your, your desire that you have good working relationships with the employees.
And we came today just prepared to talk about the legislation and to answer any questions. We've been working, spending a little bit more resources on it for, for the city. And states that have got a similar statute are Colorado and Arizona. And so we've seen what most entities there have adopted, and so there's a little bit of not having to, there's a little bit of knowledge there that might be valuable to you. And so that we and/or your administration, if you like, if you want to explore changing the status quo, the gamuts are humongous, that you could provide some collective bargaining for very little material, non-financial material, all the way to permitting all the benefits with resolution by somebody other than this board. And so that you have a really wide range if you determine that you want to have some form. You don't have to, but if you do, then you've got the, all the options under the sun.
Mr. Clanton, and then Ms. Kamson.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Actually, Mr. Fox kind of answered it when we talked about the MOU, and I just wanted to dig clarity from Dr. Bert Song with the MOU. We've been doing that for quite a while. I know prior role, you were HR and so forth down there, but we've been doing the MOU for a while, and we do that, and what's the cycle? Does that happen every year, every two years, so forth? How does that work currently now for us?
We do currently have a memorandum of understanding in place, and I do believe it's a three-year cycle, two-year? Two-year cycle. And this year would be the end of the two-year period.
The two-year period.
June 30th, 2021.
And typically, when we go through the MOU process, Dr. Bert Song, who's sitting at the table representing the employees?
It's varied from year to year, but I can say now, we have our team of chiefs that represent every department in Norfolk Public Schools, sitting at the table with our teacher organizations, the NFT and the EAN.
So my follow-up question to that one, back to the attorneys, just kind of what I was reading here, when we have an entity that, a unit that comes to, to us, so right now we've got, I've got the Norfolk Federation, and we've got the Education Association, if we move to vote and change this and go with the law, we could open it up then to several different units that could come in and, I guess, petition to the board to be recognized, to be a part of some type of collective bargaining. And then the second part of that one was, I thought I read in here that we would, if we changed it, we would also have to choose one that I guess we could collective bargain with? And so I just wanted to get clarity on that one. Is it multiple, or is it just one entity that we would have to collective bargain with, or would it be more?
Well, don't you answer the question on multiple?
So that isn't addressed in the stat, in the statute. As a practical matter, you know, you would have to identify a means by which you identify who the, who the authorized representative of the group is. It's probably not practical that you would have, it's not practical that you would have multiple representatives for, for, for a certain group where there's, there's no distinction between the members of the group.
So kind of like, in other words, when we say group, so teachers, let's say that for an example, we would have to determine one group to represent teachers, and not multiple ones. The same thing, like if there was janitors or bus drivers, they would have to be one group to represent.
That's how it's done in the private sector. So if you, if you open, you know, if you have a, have a group that, that organizes, and they want to be recognized, they have to go through an election process to identify who their, who their representative is. That's the way that Alexandria set it out for their city, that there would be an election process that you'd go through to determine who that is. And all, and you can only end up with one for that particular group. And that's, that's, I mean, I can't say what we would recommend, but I don't, I don't really know of any alternative models for how you go about that.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily looking for the recommendation. It's more or less for me, currently in our current process, and the MOU from my understanding is that there's more representation when it comes to the, both of our education groups. So that represents teachers and other individuals within, in the division. But if we were to move and change and to vote on this particular statute, and using our authority as a school board, we would then limit potentially by only having one at the table for whatever bargaining representing them. So that's what I was just trying to get clarity right now. MOU allows us to have more representation and folks at the table to speak about it, as opposed to this current statute with, when it comes to teachers, we'd only have to vote on one in order for them to be at the table. So that's what I was just trying to get clarity on. Thank you.
Ms. Kamson.
Thank you. So it sounded like, Dr. Bert Song, you said, we finishing the cycle this year?
That is correct.
And so, so what, so when would this start for us? In other words, were we to choose to allow collective bargaining, and we just finished it, but we have our, everything ready to go for the next year? Correct? So this would be something that would not happen for the next school year? It would be at least a year after that before we would be actually, if we chose to go this route, to actually be involved in collective bargaining?
That, I, I think that the process that you've historically undertaken has been on the informal side, but resembles the collective processing commonly known as meet and confer? And so I, I think that if you determined that you wanted something other than that, you could undertake to put into place prior to the expiration of the informal agreement that we've historically relied upon.
Okay, and so we put together a budget that we submit to the city for approval. So if we've done collective bargaining, and we've come up with what we want to do, and we put it into the budget, and we give it to the city, and the city kicks it back, what happens then?
Then you're unfunded, that, it still remains a request. So the fact that it was set by negotiation or a third-party mediator, it doesn't change that you don't have the authority of taxation and raising your own funds. And, and so it does not change your budget limitations.
So if, if that happened, and we had negotiated with one of the unions for, say, the teachers' union, since that would be the biggest one, whichever one that is, and we agree, and then we send it on, and then it's kicked back, then we have to renegotiate with the limits that the city has set on the budget? Is that what would happen? Seems kind of messy under this circumstance when we don't have control of money.
Right, that's the...
Or should they, should they be negotiating with the city council instead of us?
Well, the, the process that the General Assembly has allowed has that distinction from the, the private counterpart. Both the school board and the city administration are limited to what the council appropriates. And as you're probably aware, for a school board to exceed what the government, the state and city are providing it, actually is a misdemeanor or a crime. And so that this doesn't change any of that. And so if you went forward, I, I can't right now imagine how you could agree to anything other than to have to recommend. I couldn't tell you as a lawyer how you could get over the fact that you don't have the money unless the council approves it.
Okay, it's, in other words, it's going to be pretty messy for us, it sounds like, as we work it out until we come to some kind of procedure or something that, that the unions accept?
I, I think the funding stays the status quo, and I wouldn't have used the term messy, but I know what you mean.
Well, it sounds like it's going to be messy if we get, if we come up with an agreement that we agree with the union. I mean, we know, we're trying to get all of our salaries up anyway, because our teachers are so underpaid, but on the other hand, we're always limited by what the city council gives us. Hmm, okay.
Again, that's one area where the, one of the very few areas where the General Assembly was clear that the governing body cannot turn over its budgeting authority to this process. So any, any statute, any ordinance, any resolution is going to have to contain limitations that recognize that, recognize that fact.
We're definitely going to need a year or two to work it out, to figure out how to make it work, it seems like.
You can, you can set the timeline if you decide to, to authorize. You can set the timeline for it in a way that is practicable, that lines up with your budget process. I believe Alexandria has, has set it up where their first, their first contracts would not go into effect until fiscal year '24, to allow for time, you know, to...
To work it out so that it would go smoothly. I mean, I certainly don't have any problem with having unions, I just don't understand how you do it. We can't control the money. So Alexandria is in the same situation as us. Is that the whole state that, that school boards have no authority to, to...
It's the entire state.
It's because...
You're not alone.
And it's never been a problem before, because we were right to work.
Right, and we technically remain right to work, so a person...
Oh, yeah, yeah, he said that, yeah.
Cannot be forced to join a union in, in order to work for you.
So, all right, I guess I always thought right to work was more comprehensive than that. That just takes, you can't force people to join the union, but you can still have unions, okay. All right. It looks like we're going to have to be calling on you guys a lot for information as we try and work through this. Thank you very much.
Mr. Jordan, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that last year, the Virginia School Boards Association formed a collective bargaining task force in anticipation of, of the legislation, and there's a report that was released October of 2020 that has some recommendations, best practices, steps, and so forth for school boards to consider. And also, there've been a series of webinars. I think there was one maybe a month ago that Sands Anderson and VSBA staff and others were a part of that as school boards are considering this. And what I would recommend we consider as a board is collectively reviewing the, the report, and maybe going back collectively and taking a look at the, the webinars that have been presented. I don't know if everybody has had the opportunity to see those. And then come back and have a discussion around what we may want to do, do next. Also, as we consider the final adoption of our, of our budget, I know last year, one of the recommendations I was asking the board to consider is maybe set aside some funds to help us support figuring this out, if it's a direction that the board decides to, to go in. So I think that's something to consider. And then the last thing I'll just mention, we've talked about the MOU for years. I think Norfolk was considered somewhat of an albatross, because we had a MOU and nobody else did. And so to me, the MOUs that we have puts us in a position to build upon that goodwill so we decide to go down a particular path. But just from, as a novice participating on the task force and some of these webinars, the bargaining units, as they mentioned, can be very complicated. We're used to thinking about teachers, but, you know, any employee group can be a bargaining unit depending upon how it's, how it's worked out. And one of the recommendations in the task force report is, you know, if the board decides it wants to pursue something like this, that one of the first things that, that you do is sit down with the local appropriating body, with the city council, maybe in a treat format or some type of joint meeting, and really have a discussion around what does it mean, where do we go, what does it look like, and get a good sense of what we may consider, because as has been discussed, it is going to require a collaborative partnership. But I think it's also important that the way things work on the school board side, with the superintendent having the role that, that she has, and school board members approving staffing in ways that doesn't happen on the, on the city side, that we stay conscious of those things that are unique to us as a school division versus what may be different on the city side as they deal with firefighters and police officers and so forth. But I do think maybe, maybe in July or some point on our agenda moving forward, we can set some time aside to really talk about it some more beyond the, the legal update that we've gotten, received today.
Great, well, thank you very much, Mr. Fox, Mr. Pishko, and Mr. Mungo, I see you over there. Thank you all for... Thank you all for, well, thank you, Mr. Fox, for your presentation. Who's, Mr. Mungo, are you sitting in for Mr. Cloud today? So you're going to stick around? Okay, great, great. But yes, obviously, we have, you know, this was a kickoff, to kick off our conversation around the new legislation with, you know, collective bargaining. And there will be more discussion about the details and implications of this. So that we can make, come up with a, you know, work with our administration to come up with a decision moving forward. So, well, thank you. And moving forward, we have in-person learning update. Dr. Paul, please lead us in the discussion.
All right. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Dr. Martin, Vice Chairman Mr. Jordan, members of the board and Dr. Bertzong. I'm here this afternoon to share an update on in-person learning. This afternoon, I'll review third-quarter grade data, attendance and bus ridership updates, VSA updates, planning updates for the '21-'22 school year and graduation plans. Here we see the same data that was shared last month, reviewing quarter-one grades and the trend data for the three years. As a reminder, the data on the following slides is focused on students failing two or more courses. Quarter-two data is also the same as previously shared. And this slide shows the division-wide breakdown of third-quarter grades for students in grades one through 12, broken down by gap groups and an all-student group. As you can see, the failure rate is higher than what has been seen in the past in all areas. Included in the uploaded documents is a breakdown of quarter-three grades by grade level as well. For that data, the bar graphs represent the grade-level data and the line graphs represent the K-12 average data. This slide represents the differences from quarter-two to quarter-three of students failing two or more courses. As seen here, the 2019-2020 data saw large declines in failures as this was the first grading period following the mandatory school closures. The data show that on average, across the division, the difference in the number of students from quarter-two to quarter-three this school year to be consistent with the 2018-2019 data, with students in the English learner, Asian and Hispanic groups showing a decline of over 1% and students in the two-or-more races group showing increase of over 1%. Division-wide attendance from March 15th through April 27th for students attending in-person instruction is seen on this slide. With the average absentee rate being 7.33%, the lowest was 5.93% on March 31st, and the highest rate was on April 12th, with just over 10% of the students being absent. This slide represents the same attendance data, broken down by grade level. Here we see bus ridership from March 15th through April 27th, with the average ridership on the non-special education fleet being just over eight students and the highest number being 33 students. With the special education fleet, the average ridership has been just over three students and the highest was 15 students. As we transition to the VSA updates, we'll begin with the current enrollment numbers of students in VSA as well as those enrolled for in-person learning. This slide represents the data by grade level. The highlighted numbers seen here represent the total number of first-grade students. Therefore, 37.4% of our first-grade students are enrolled in VSA, while 62.6% of them are attending in-person instruction. Here, the highlighted section represents the breakdown of students by grade level enrolled in VSA. Reading across the row, the data show 7.6% of the VSA students are in first grade, 7.7% are in second grade, moving all the way to the other end, where 2.8% of the VSA enrollment is from our pre-K program. Here we see the VSA enrollment broken bound by ethnicity. And here, the highlighted section shows 40.8% of the students within the two-or-more races group are enrolled in VSA, while 59.2% are enrolled in in-person learning. Reading across this row, the data represents the breakdown of ethnicities enrolled in VSA. Starting on the left, 7% of the VSA students are students of two-or-more races and going across to the right shows the full breakdown of the VSA enrollment. For additional VSA enrollment data by school, a document was uploaded again for your review. Looking to next year, the Virtual Scholars Academy will be available to all students in grades four through 12 with full course offerings to include special education services and collaborative classes. Students and families can choose this option for health concerns or for the desire to continue with virtual instruction. Additionally, flexibility to move between in-person or VSA will be available for those with health concerns or students who may not, who may be unsuccessful with virtual learning. There are four possible modalities for the VSA next year. These are dependent upon enrollment requests for VSA. First, there may be a fully synchronous model with Zoom classes five days a week, structured similarly to the normal school day. Next, there will be a fully asynchronous offerings where students complete coursework independently and have check-in sessions with teachers. This is the most flexible option for students, however, they must adhere to the course pacing. Next is the possibility of a blended model with both asynchronous work with scheduled live instructional sessions with teachers. Finally, there'll be offerings through Virtual Virginia. Although there's a per-student cost for this option, some courses with low interest across the division will have this opportunity to ensure course offerings are as broad as possible. Concurrent instruction will not be the model VSA uses next year. Let me say that one more time. Concurrent instruction will not be the model the VSA uses next year. Schedules will be built around the students who have selected to learn through VSA and teachers from across the division may be teaching courses. Therefore, although a student may be zoned for Lake Taylor High School, they may have a teacher who works at Granby High School as their teacher of record for the course. Students enrolled in VSA will be allowed to participate in sports and extracurricular activities at their own schools. And it's also important to note, students in specialty programs will not be able to enroll fully into VSA as many of their courses will not be offered online. If a student signs up for VSA who turns out not to be successful, they may be moved to an in-person instructional model. As with any program, regular interaction between teachers and their students is critical. Even for students within the asynchronous program, there will be expectations of emails, phone calls and instructional sessions for students. Every student must attend in-person learning sessions or meetings while enrolled in VSA. In order to gain an understanding as to interest for VSA for the '21-'22 school year, a survey was created and sent to all NPS families. This was designed as a quick check gauge of interest for next year. Although the survey did not commit families, it did indicate interest in all levels for VSA. Next, the formal application will be distributed. School councils will share information with teachers and then enroll interested students into VSA. As staffing starts for VSA, current staff will be used as well as extra-box supplements offered to teachers teaching beyond their normal workload in order to develop a schedule with no concurrent teaching. Continuing the focus on next school year, NPS will offer an option to all students from pre-K through grade 12 of a full school year of in-person instruction. This will be a five-day-a-week program that meets the requirements of the minimum of 990 hours of in-person instruction following the NPS academic calendar. All students will be scheduled for this option unless parents or guardians choose a virtual option. As stated earlier, there'll also be the option of virtual learning for students in grades four through 12 during the 2021-22 school year. Parents and guardians must work with their students to apply for this option and flexibility will be allowed for students to opt in and out of VSA during the school year. As with this school year, the health and safety of NPS students and staff is of the utmost importance. NPS will continue to follow the core and secondary mitigation strategies as well as any updated CDC guidelines. Leadership will continue to collaborate with the Norfolk Health Department to ensure the safety of our community. As you may have seen, part of the focus on health and safety is the opportunity for all students ages 16 and up to receive and complete a full COVID-19 vaccination prior to the end of this school year. Information was sent to families last week to begin this important process and the process will begin during the week of May 10th for all students whose parents or guardians submit a signed consent form. There is no cost for students and there is detailed information as well as access to any needed forms on the NPS website. And last, but certainly not least, NPS is excited to announce the schedule for in-person graduation this year at ODU's Ballard Stadium. While the contract is being finalized, we anticipate that each student will have six tickets for guests. This slide has the graduation schedule, starting with Norview on June 10th at 9:00 a.m. and ending with Granby on June 15th at 9:00 a.m. There are also two rain dates built in as the ceremonies will be taking place outside. Specific information will be shared at the school level in the near future. Thank you again for the opportunity for allowing me to share this information. My colleagues and I stand by to answer any questions you may have.
I'm impressed by the six tickets, by the way. That's awesome. Ms. Campson, go ahead.
Concurrent, yay. So are we going to have a cadre of teachers that are separate and just work with the VSA group?
So we'll have a combination of both. So there may be, let's take high school, for instance. There may be a high school teacher who is teaching three courses face-to-face and two courses that are just fully online. Or we may have a high school teacher who is teaching five courses online and is getting an extra-box supplement to teach an additional course online. So it'll be a mix of what we have depending on the needs based on enrollment for VSA.
Right, I can see that in high school and that makes sense. But at the elementary level?
So elementary will schedule based on the need and we'll have teachers who will teach primarily portions of their day just online and some in-person. And there's a possibility where we'll also use Virtual Virginia, who has a fully synchronous online program as well for next year.
So if you're a classroom teacher, you're teaching in-person to that class and you're not doing any VSA?
Correct.
All right.
Yeah, correct. We are scheduling so that all VSA students have a VSA teacher and all in-person teachers are teaching in-person to avoid concurrent teaching next year.
So if you have only a handful of VSA students, do you then combine those? So for example, a school might have four third grades.
Correct.
And they, if they, they might pull them all out to one online group?
Correct. So you may, so if third grade, you may be from five different elementary schools and if, that might make a class of 15 to 20, that one teacher would teach that class from the different schools.
And she would become the teacher of record?
Correct.
So that she'd be able to do all the communications and work with parents and everything?
Correct.
Okay, that's a really, really big deal. Okay, I have one more question. Everyone knows that I'm always focused, focused on the primary kids, make everyone reading on grade level by third grade. However, at this moment, unbelievable as it may seem, my focus is on the seniors. What's happening for our seniors who have not been coming regularly, who are in that two classes or more failure? Because if we lose these seniors, if we don't get them graduated, many of them won't come back next year and that's their whole life. So is there, I'm sure the high school principals are doing things, but is there a set thing that's being done to capture all these? I don't know how many there are, but the number of seniors that have not been showing up regularly, who are failing classes, who were on track before this pandemic hit? What's the plan for that, for our high school seniors?
So each of our high schools have developed plans. Our graduation coaches are highly involved and our councils are highly involved. And they've been in contact with the students throughout the year. That has been one of the highest priorities for them. And each high school has their plan for the seniors to make sure as we're coming back and transitioning back to in-person for high school that we're catching those students and we're still catching the ones who are in VSA.
So are there, is there a larger group that you haven't been able to get your hands on?
I don't have a division-wide aspect on that at this point.
Because when you were showing, when we were looking at the failed two classes or more, there was a lot in there. And I'm just very, very, very worried about these high school seniors because a lot of them kind of disappeared almost during this past year. And if they don't make it in time for these graduation dates we just saw, will we continue working in the summer to give them an opportunity to have an August graduation?
Absolutely, we will be. And also, please note that some of those failures may be in elective courses that they don't need to graduate with. So that the schools have been focused on the needs for graduation for the seniors, most definitely.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Also, the ninth graders, I mean, their very, their average is very high as well. So it's not just the seniors. Dr. Bertzong, did you have something in response to Ms. Campson?
Yes, I just wanted to add to Dr. Paul's comments around concurrent teaching. Yes, our primary mode will not have any of our teachers have to do that, but we did set aside funding during the budget process to be able to provide a supplement to teachers, but that's not going to be the primary mode of delivering instruction. There may be a case, maybe one or two. I just want us to remain a little flexible because we don't know what the numbers are going to end up looking like. So right now, that is our plan, is to have teachers either be VSA teachers or, you know, teach in-person or have separate classes where they might be in-person or on VSA. But there may be an occasion or two whereby we may need a teacher to teach concurrently, but it will be because they desire to do so and they will be compensated for that. I just want to be clear with that, just in case we have one or two situations next year and we need to do that. So we'll need that flexibility.
And I agree with that. It's just my concern is that at the elementary level, the moment you put someone else on the screen, then a teacher's trying to deliver in-class, which is one kind of delivery, and deliver online, which is totally different. And we've seen that conflict and struggle. So that would be at high school and even middle school classes. I can see elementary is where I would have a concern about it because then it turns...
Yes.
Okay, that'll be, okay.
It will be looked at on a case-by-case basis. And it would not be ideal for our elementary students, which is, you know, we have the same concerns about early literacy and that's why we're bringing in all of our pre-K three students just because of that concern and many other concerns, but we want them in our schools.
Absolutely.
In front of our teachers, getting that face-to-face instruction.
This is great. I'm really impressed with how detailed it is. I just wanted to make sure that it was, that I understood what you were doing and thank you very much. That was, it's a great job you guys are doing with. Thank you very much.
Ms. Piscine, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Martin. I have similar questions, you know, related to some of what Ms. Campson just asked about the concurrent teaching. And Dr. Bertzong, I appreciate some of the clarification you just provided. However, I still, I'm still unclear. So on slides 17 and 18, I felt like, so a family or a family will be able to choose which modality, correct? Did I understand that? So there could be some percentage of students or families that want VSA who may say, I want full synchronous, I want to be asynchronous completely. So there's four modalities that a student could choose, including obviously the Virtual Virginia. So if we are not providing these same choices to our staff or to our teachers, how, I'm concerned about how we're going to link that up and how we're going to be able to really say with confidence, minus the couple of exceptions that Dr. Bertzong just described, that we won't be doing concurrent teaching. And I almost feel like we, if that is, if minimizing to eliminate concurrent teaching altogether is the goal, then should we be working backwards and saying that Virtual Scholars Academy needs to look like X in order to achieve that goal of not providing concurrent teaching? Because I can tell you that has been one of the hottest topics since our students have returned back to school is that I have not received positive feedback on that. It's extremely stressful. I know there are some teachers that are, I think are teetering on the edge of resigning. And this is, you know, I'm glad to hear it's not our goal to have concurrent teaching next year. But I think if that is our goal in order to retain our staff and order to provide the best opportunities for our students, that we need to work backwards. I'm concerned that we're providing too many options here for families when really we should stick with a model and let families know that that is our model. And, you know, it's kind of like this, we're providing an option, take it or leave it, you know? And right now, I'm concerned about having too many options. I would like to understand Virtual Virginia a little better because they are also promoting their programs at a cost. So I'm still confused about how we might partner, if that is what I'm seeing up there as a partnership that wouldn't be of cost to families. Because while at the same time, they are also heavily promoting their programs to families. families. Because I've been getting them periodically, frequently, you know? And I know next week they're having a bunch of information sessions. So I'm not clear on how we're partnering with them. And I would like to know more about that.
Before we go to the Virtual Virginia, though, going back to your previous question about the concurrent teaching. So just for clarity, there's been a lot of discussion about old model versus new model and moving forward. So is the, so I guess I'd like to understand the decision-making in the concurrent teaching moving forward. Is this something that we're seeing as virtual is here to stay? Or is this still kind of a piece of being still in a pandemic?
Our goal was to be as flexible as possible. We wanted to provide flexibility for our families. We understand that we have to provide nine hundred and ninety hours of instruction, five days a week next year, a total of nine ninety throughout the school year, five days a week. And so we anticipate that many of our family members will still have, be hesitant to return their children to school. And we'd rather than being in our classrooms, connected with our teachers, than, you know, parents maybe making the decision to homeschool their children, like many of them have this year. Again, our goal was to provide the flexibility. Concurrent teaching would not, is not ideal, but it has worked amazingly in a lot of situations. And I am very, again, hesitant to say that there won't be a few teachers who we may ask to do that. We will compensate them for doing that. Again, our goal was to provide some level of flexibility, knowing that during this transition year, that some of our families would want that. Again, if the children are enrolled in the VSA and their parents decide that they want them back in school for in-person learning, we will allow that. So again, we're trying to be flexible, getting our kids back into our schools. And we developed options around that. That was...
You very much. And Ms. Bassin, did you want to go ahead with the question around partnering with the Virtual Virginia, or is this a new question?
Yeah, I mean, I don't expect that you have that answer right now, and it may be a work in progress. So I'm just sharing with you that I'm not clear right now on that. And if you have that information, then, you know...
I do have some, if I may.
Okay.
So one, I want to go back to the four options up there. Those are all possible modalities. We wanted to find the interest base. And if there's no interest at all in a full synchronous or very little, then that wouldn't be a modality because we know we can't offer those courses. So we're really trying to give, like Dr. Birdsong said, that flexibility and the interest that the parents see and the students see and the guardians see that they want best as we develop and go into the schedule. So knowing very well at this point, we may not have all four of those options. The Virtual Virginia, the, if we have students in Virtual Virginia that are taking courses through Norfolk Public Schools, we would, we would pay that portion. In fact, we have allotments, I think up to fifteen per school at the high school level per course that we can have at no charge as Norfolk Public Schools. I would, I would offer caution, I'm not sure, a couple of years ago, and Dr. Birdsong may recall this as well, a couple of years ago, there was a program called Virginia Virtual that was, that was sending information to parents and saying, you could come to us and it's low charge and it's fully online. That is a totally different program. Virtual Virginia is run through the VDOE and through the public school divisions. So those students would actually still be part of RDADM. So we would, of course, pay for the courses through Virtual Virginia if that was the avenue that we were sending students to.
Thank you. That, that was Virtual Virginia that I was referencing. But, so, still staying on this topic, so will there be minimum requirements of families who choose to participate? For instance, you know, I understand that we're still providing flexibility due to health concerns. But if a student has not been successful in the virtual environment, like we're seeing in the data, that clearly, virtual online schooling has not been successful for a majority of our students, primarily those that we really need, you know, to have, that have the highest need. So I guess I'm wondering, will there be, in the application process, some sort of stipulation? Would there be some sort of expectation set around, you know, class attendance, participation, you know, completion of work, anything like that? And if I also heard correctly, there wouldn't be a minimum commitment to do it, I mean, a commitment to do it for a full year. They would, it seems like they would have the option to come in-person if they were not successful. Or they may simply, for social and emotional reasons, want to return to in-person learning. What impact will that then have on our staffing? So those are some, some issues that I think, you know, we need to really think about.
And those we've also, we've also been working on addressing as well. As Dr. Birdsong said, there was funding set aside for the concurrent teaching stipend, also funding set aside. So if, with teachers who are teaching extra block supplements, we, our goal is to staff VSA in a way that if the students came back to in-person, that we have, the seats are available for them at their homeschool when they come back in-person, if they so choose to do that. So that is a part of our mindset. And to answer your other question, yes, the application process will consider their success in the online world as well.
Okay, all right, great. And then, so I have a couple more questions now getting to the grading piece. I too, you know, I'm very concerned, not so much it's not about the grades, it's what the grades may be telling us about what is impacting teaching and learning. And for me, you know, at the elementary level, it's, you know, it's stark across the board. But really, you know, at the high school level, it is also deeply concerning. And so one of the questions I had asked, and, you know, with the boards' report, you know, I'd like to get this information, like at the beginning, in the fall of 2020, you know, how many of our students were on target or to graduate on time? And then currently, how many of our students are on target to graduate on time? And I asked that question in terms of credit recovery, in terms of social and emotional support, you know, all of it. And also, you know, you all know I've asked about open campus, you know, many times and wanting an update about that program. And if there's opportunities for us to expand that program or expand seats at that program to really allow this non-traditional mode of learning for our high school students who may now be working, which may be impacting their participation during a regular school day, or maybe, you know, have, you know, other responsibilities, just trying to get them back in, you know, what, you know, I, like Ms. Campson, I want to know what we are doing. And not so much, I'm glad to hear there's, there's a plan, you know? I know each of our schools are planning on how to get our students back. But I would like to know from a monitoring standpoint, what that, what is our measure of success in getting those students back? And how do we, as a board, monitor what that is? So I think we need to have our finger on the pulse, other than just knowing what, you know, what our administration is doing around that. Which also gets to the point of, you know, I asked questions about, how many students have we lost track of? And so that's something that I would really like to know altogether. It's like, how many students have we lost track of during this pandemic? And what resources are we going to put behind trying to get them back into the classroom? And so that's something I think as a board, we need to also be monitoring closely.
I have a point of clarification on that question because, you know, some families at the beginning of the pandemic moved, combined households, things, you know, so some of the students that, this is just me talking, I just want some clarity on this because I'm, this is what I remember from several conversations I had. And so we wouldn't necessarily know where some of those students are. So Dr. Birdsong, can you talk to us a little bit about that, what you've gone through with trying to identify students?
We do track our students. One of the primary roles of our graduation coaches is to make sure that our kids are where they need to be so that they can graduate on time. There is a process in place at every high school to make sure that when a student is absent or if they've been absent for seven or more days, there are certain things that we do in order to find children. I would say that there are very few children that we don't know where they are. But there have been some children who have more than likely moved to another state, and they haven't been located at this time. So what she's saying is, is correct. Some children have moved during the pandemic. And unfortunately, you know, we have a system in Virginia where we're able to track them by their number. But if they go to another state and then they don't enroll, then that becomes an issue for us. Because then we, we don't have a way of finding where those children are. But high schools are accustomed to doing this type of work.
So I'm just trying to understand how that report would be. So if you don't know what you don't know, how would, how would we report on those students?
Well, that, that's a question for the administration. Because I don't know what variables are examined to, to really come to that, you know, that conclusion, you know? So I'm really leaning on the administration. But that's a question I know divisions across the country are talking about and discussing. And so it could be enrollment data, it could be, you know, how many students haven't logged on at all, you know, who we don't know moved or don't know, you know, who didn't formally withdraw from the school division. You know, I don't, I don't know that part of our processes, so I can't really say this is how we would monitor, monitor that. I'm simply asking or suggesting that the board do monitor it and that the administration figures out how they, how they are monitoring it and, and sharing that at a higher level with us. Does that make sense?
Well, I hear, I, I hear your desire to monitor the loss of students from our district. I just, I'm not sure if that, I really, I'm not seeing how that's a board-level monitoring process. I think that that's very operational. The division is, the administration has been working on that, just as they would every other year. But if, like Dr. Birdsong said, if, if the students moved out of state, we have no idea of knowing where they would be.
Yeah, well...
That's their, their records have been requested.
Okay.
And to the point about what's board-level and not board-level, monitoring our students is board-level. You know, I'm not telling anyone how to provide us with that data. I think monitoring that and knowing why students are not in our buildings is essential to what we're doing to get positive student outcomes. And what resources we may need to support our students so that they may be successful in the classroom, whatever that is. And to my point of, is it expanding open campus? Is it providing, you know, alternative supports? Is it going and seeing what kind of social and emotional supports? Right now, we're, you know, in the midst of a very, you know, in a pandemic year. And it's not something we may traditionally monitor. But I think given that we are in a pandemic, which we're going to be in through, for the next several years, trying to help our students recover all that they have lost, you know, from a holistic standpoint, I think it is something we should have our finger on the pulse of. And, you know, that's my personal perspective, and that may not be shared by the board, and that's fine. I'm just sharing...
I think this is very important. We, you know, students have, we don't know what happened to them. I think that that's definitely an important concern. I just don't know that we need to get a report on it at the board level and what that would, as we're going through this governance training, how does that relate to student outcomes? When attendance, you know, we'd already had the discussion about attendance not being a student outcome, that's an adult concern. So anyways, I think that we'll flesh this out a little more as we go through our governance training. I think, you know, you've clearly stated where you stand on this, and you brought this up several times. And so I think that, you know, I definitely know we will be coming back to this topic. But for this meeting here, I'm going to move on. Mr. Clanton, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. I don't necessarily disagree with Ms. Bassin's assessment there. Whether or not we need to have a particular report on it, maybe not. But from the state level, absenteeism is something that we're, that we're monitoring. When we do get prepared to go into reaccreditation and they're looking at those things, it's important. And if students aren't in the classroom, if students aren't logging in, that does affect student outcomes. So I just don't know if it needs to be in a report in itself, but I think that what we need to probably, my recommendation would be that we allow the administration, they have told us, we're seeing it in our data here, and more or less that we get a recommendation at some particular point. I'd like to hear more about the summer program. That's one of the things that the administrations already put forth to the board to mitigate that, to mitigate any of the loss that we, that our students have been experiencing. And really to hear more about that and how we're outreach to ensure that where those seats are being filled and that we're reaching students.
Okay, we did get a presentation on that. I don't know if there's any, we're not going to talk about it now, but...
No, I'm just saying how that's going, maybe, potentially.
I agree, and I agree with what Mr. Clanton's saying. I mean, that's just part of it. You know, how is our summer programming going? Do we need to have targeted, you know, a targeted approach? I mean, that's all part of, you know, the reason why I'm asking that question. But anyway, I'll, I know other colleagues have questions.
I mean, like I said, the administrations come to us with a plan for summer school. And I don't, I don't know if this is really, I mean, what we're talking about this. But really, how we're going, how's that going? And what me...
Monitoring.
What'd you say?
Monitoring. You're just simply asking for monitoring.
Yeah, I mean, but I mean, even today, I'm just...
First time was an introduction of what the plan is. But as a board, we should expect and receive periodic updates. It's on. We should, oh, there it is. We should receive periodic updates of what's happening with the different information that's being presented to us. Same with the attendance rates. As Mr. Clanton said, if they're not here, then it most definitely impacts student outcome. So one of the things I thought when I was looking at the presentation was, it would have been great to see the attendance comparison post-pandemic with the pandemic, so that we can see truly what happened attendance-wise from one point to the other. And then you go from there and say, so here's what we're going to do about it.
Yeah, I mean, just because we don't know where students are doesn't mean that they're not in school. I have, I have Mr. Jordan and then Ms. Campson.
Thank you. I would like the, one recommendation I would have for the board to consider is having the Virtual Scholars Academy presentation recommendation as a separate presentation in consideration from the in-person learning update. I think that in the midst of the pandemic, we know that the VSA was, stood up and was operating within the virtual environment that we have for the pandemic. Looking at the trend grade data, I don't think we really know how students are doing. Can you now hear me?
If you could talk a little louder, maybe get your mic closer.
Okay, is this better?
Yes, thank you.
That, I'm not sure, as a result of what we stood up successfully with the VSA and what we've been doing with virtual learning this past year, in some ways in response to the pandemic, in other ways maybe in planning to go down this path, I don't think we really know how students are performing in the midst of the virtual environment. We know that the pandemic has brought a lot of different dynamics for us to consider. And when you look at the quarter-three trend grade data with significant, if I'm reading it correct, on slide five, significant... significant challenges that have, that have been presented in terms of some of our academic performance. I don't know that I know what's driving that. Is it mastery of content or like thereof? Is it trauma? Is it not being connected? Is it absenteeism? I really don't have any idea. And so I think that if we're now making decisions around having the VSA program as has been described in, in this update, I think we need to come back and really have a real understanding of how has the VSA as currently implemented done with serving our students? What are we truly doing in terms of enhancing it to better serve our students? And will it serve the students well that we, based upon survey data, think may be the ones who will participate? If you go to slide, one of the other slides, I think it was slide, one of the slides, several of the slides that are indicating VSA participation by ethnicity and other, other breakdowns. I, I think that's given us a sense of how things are right now. But it appears to me that we have a significant number of African-American students that are in or have chosen the VSA. And then you have a large percentage of African-American students who are, the, the data, the great data show we're having some, some challenges. So I just feel like the board should, should separate out what's being proposed for the VSA so we have a clear understanding of what the program is, who will participate, and what the supports and programming will be so that we can ensure that what we are providing is meeting the academic needs of the students and the support needs of the teachers and staff that are, that are serving them. If we're truly talking about VSA as a comprehensive daily choice option versus a response to the pandemic. So that, that, that's one thing I would ask the board to consider before we go too far with saying that, as is recommended in slides 16 and 17, that the, this is what the VSA is, or may be effective September of, of the coming year. I think we need more in-depth understanding of how this serves or will serve the, the successful outcomes for, for our students. The, separate from that, I, I will echo what, or will provide support to what I think Ms. Basine, Mr. Clanton, and others have mentioned. I don't think we necessarily need a report that results in a conversation at a school board meeting. But I do think that whether it's via our dashboard or whether it's through reports that we, we receive from ARA, I think I got that right, we can receive data and information that helps us make good decisions without it being something that results in us spending time on it during a board meeting. And also importantly, having a balance between what we need to make good decisions and what we're requesting so that the administration isn't constantly just generating reports, but that we're just clear in terms of some things that are just available to us. How do we get to them? It's a dashboard. Other things may be individually prepared as the board as a whole determines is needed. And then the last item I would ask, and if it's not for this update, maybe at the June work session, is just getting a sense of where we are with our pre-K publicity promotion enrollment program that we talked about a, a month or so ago. But two main takeaways I have from the, this presentation is really having a good sense of how our students are doing today and why they're doing well or not well, whatever the situation may be, so that we can be clear on what we're going to do to support them moving forward. And then number two, again, pulling out the VSA as a distinct and separate presentation so the board can have a good understanding of what's being, being proposed and how it impacts the rest of the, of the work of the school division. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Dr. Paul? Campson?
I'll do this real quick because I'm revisiting, but back to the attendance. I'm not quite sure why anyone would think that that's not something that we should be tracking. We used to track it, and we were looking at it in ref, in relationship to retentions and the impact on retentions. And if you're retaining someone, it's because they are not doing the academic levels that they should. And, and if that's related to especially the chronic attendance students, I mean absentee students. So I, I, and that's the reason the state asked for it as part of your accreditation. So let's not ever think about, not thinking how, how critical it is to know about attendance and why we have so many people working to get everyone in. Because attendance impacts grades, it impacts promotion, it impacts graduation rates. And all of those things are things that the state looks at for a reason. And the, and the reason is the impact of students. I certainly agree with what y'all were saying about attendance and how important it is because I, we did track it. And we, and it was very obvious when we looked at the data then, the impact that it was having on the retention rates. And retention, as I've said before, is a reflection of academic achievement. So that was just a quick thing I wanted to add to the conversation.
I think we all, we're all agreeing that we should be tracking attendance. What I'm saying is those that we didn't get back, we didn't get back. And to try to come up with a report and monitor why we didn't, why we lost some students, I'm, I'm trying to understand that.
Well, that wasn't what I was asking. I was just saying that we're looking at it because that lets us pinpoint the kids we need to go after, whether it's now with our seniors, which we're all very concerned about, or it's just day by day because chronic, and you can see it when you chart it out because the problem, it hits right there in middle school with attendance and chronic absenteeism and the failure that it, that happens with students. So it's really critical, and I don't, and I want to make sure that we all understand the impact that that has. So it, it, it does impact outcomes, student outcomes, every single day. So, thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to our policy discussion, Dr. Paul, are you gonna?
Go here. So we have two policies tonight on the agenda. One is GBL. That was in the latest batch of updates from VSBA. This follows the VSBA guidelines. We just, the, the PRC, the Policy Review Committee had asked VSBA to quali, qualify why they took out the line, and it was just because it was redundant. So that, you know, so we brought that forward to the board. KBC Media Relations, we brought to the board last month, but was asked to, we were asked to review it one more time. And leadership and the Policy Review Committee agreed that we would, the, to stick with the VSBA update and that the procedures in place for social media would, would, would guide the division. So these are the only two policies for this month.
Thank you. Mr. Jordan, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I would still ask the board, and I'm comfortable if we want to adopt the policies as they're currently presented for the next business meeting. But I would like to come back and, and say that I think we do need to have a deeper consideration from a policy perspective, not just at the regulations perspective, around our school and community relation policies, of which media relations is one piece of it. We, we, for years, I think for at least five of my years on the board, there was constant board conversation around, we need to have communication plans, we need to have better community engagement, we need to have a communication audit, we need to make sure our policies are up to date. And then we asked superintendent to do a communication audit, which Dr. Birdsong did for us, or at least, I think, at least the, what may, I don't know if it was the first phase of one or if it's considered, we did get a presentation, a communications audit. And, and so we also approved other supports to, to enhance our communication. I think that when you look at our communication, school, community relations policies, a lot of them are out of date or need new language based upon current circumstances. Just having the honor of serving as your vice chair, there's often communication that the chair and I will receive from the, the media and things we've been dealing with, with FOIA, different activities they've been having around the Commonwealth and around the country with school boards and communication and all kinds of things. The pandemic has kind of unleashed, and I think gives us an opportunity to revisit our communication strategies, especially as we articulated in our accountability plan. So maybe for now, if it's the will of the board to accept the, the policy as is, that's, that's fine. But I think we need to revisit whether or not we're going to establish, reestablish school and community relations and community engagement and communication as a board priority and goal. And if so, be clear in what we may be asking of the superintendent and have policies being a part of that, part of that review. If we're fine and comfortable with the way things are, then, you know, that can be the will of the board. But I just think that with so much going on right now around communications and policies and issues that are bubbling up for policymakers and elected officials dealing with communication and public information and so forth, it would serve us well to consider doing a deeper dive of all of our, or at least a significant number of our school community relation policies to make sure that, that not only we are up to date, but that we can get ahead of the game in terms of our work in that regard. So, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Clanton, go ahead, and then Ms. Basine.
All right, great. As a member of the Policy Review Committee, I don't disagree with Mr. Jordan that, you know, we always need to review our policies. And to be frank, our current policy really reflects a lot of an appointed board. We need to take a deeper dive and look at some of the regulations that they change and differ as an elected board. But also we have to take into account that we have our wonderful new communications chief here, and we want to still allow her time. And I'm quite sure there will be some recommendation at some particular point in time when we look at the audit. We had an audit last year, and all those things will come before us. And some recommendations as to how they want to move forward. But I don't disagree in the respect that we will probably take time. And, you know, I definitely kind of put it on my notes here. You know, this is something we will review, and I know Dr. Paul is hearing it, and Dr. Gibson as well. But I think what we have right now allows us to move forward. It doesn't break any laws or anything else, but we definitely, especially as we're coming about with this whole governance training, and we're looking at new strategic plans and looking at goals and guardrails, I think that this will be perfect timing to come back. Once we've assessed what the community has said, are there major focus areas? And this will allow us that opportunity to do that this summer.
And if, if I may, and I just want to be clear, I'm, I'm not asking the board to task the policy committee. What I'm saying is, I think as a board, as we're going through our governance and go through establishing what our, what our goals and expectations may be, that we consider this is something that we've had had as a priority for some time. And that was the context in which I was raising it. And I'm also not asking us to dictate to the administration or to the chiefs what they do in terms of the day-to-day, because I know a lot of the audit addressed personnel and actions of, of staffing. I'm just saying that from the board policy perspective, that as we continue to do the work moving forward, that we consider not losing sight of the communications piece and the engagement piece. And if we set that as a goal and priority, then as a board, we can share our expectations with the superintendent and administration. And as part of this policy manual review that we should be doing, that, that might, that the communication policies may be something that we give special attention to.
Hit the order, I'm sorry. So, I was thinking, Ms. Campson? Up next, or Ms. Basine? Ms. Basine?
I don't, I don't have anything additional to ask. I, I was just merely going to say, you know, I don't, I don't know what point the procedures are at right now. If that is, it may be helpful to, if they are, you know, completed, you know, if they could be shared with the board, I think that might alleviate or may put this current policy in better perspective. The other thing, you know, I wholeheartedly support what Mr. Mr. Jordan is asking, that we do review all of our, you know, communication-related and community and family engagement policies to make sure, you know, that they're all in alignment and current and up to date. And we'll, you know, we'll, as Mr. Clanton just mentioned, as a member of the PRC, we'll, we'll take a closer, closer look at that in collaboration with Ms. Matthews. And the administration, yeah.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, Dr. Paul.
My pleasure.
Next up, we have item 2.04, the renaming of schools' community engagement proposal. Ms. Matthews?
Good evening. Hi, good evening. Chairwoman, Dr. Martin, Vice Chair, Mr. Jordan, school board members, and Dr. Birdsong. I wanted to use this laptop, but it's locked, so that's okay. Okay, yeah, I had notes that I wanted to see on here, but okay. So this is a update from our previous conversation in February where we discussed the renaming of schools. And we went through the history of the school names and looked at the list of what each school name, those who are named after certain individuals or certain areas and landmarks, and what they are named for and named after. So we can move on to the next slide. And so as a recap, this is a follow-up to a national movement that had been taking place following what happened in Charlottesville and ongoing outcry for social justice and happening in school districts across the country where they have been looking at the names of the schools and who they're named after. Monuments even here in the Commonwealth were being taken down. And so our governor, Northam, did send a letter encouraging all school divisions in the Commonwealth to consider looking at the names of their schools and who they're named after and take a look and see if it represents the mission and vision for our school divisions and what's happening. Thank you. And so you all began this discussion in July and started that conversation and made some progress there. And then as we went into the next school year, and the next thing we know, a pandemic happened. And so we did revisit this conversation in February, and we looked at all of the names of the schools. We can go to the next slide. And so the schools for consideration, we did go through a list. And as most of the school divisions across the Commonwealth, we looked at three different tiers of schools. And so if we go to the next slide, these were the top three schools that we looked at that had the most immediate need, based on discussions and based on the history behind the names. And so we have WH Taylor Elementary School, we have Ruffner Middle School, and we have Maury High School. And so as we look at each of those, I'll remind you of the cost associated with an elementary school and renaming. And that is approximately $22,820. And that's, again, not including a 10% contingency, not including the per-letter cost, they're not including if the mascot would also need to change. For a middle school, the estimated cost was somewhere around $127,000. Again, not including that. thousand, again, not including that 10% contingency, not including the mascot if it needed to change, and also not including the per-letter cost for renaming the school. And then last, of course, a high school, as we get into that arena, it's a little bit more costly, and that is upwards of five hundred thousand dollars. And as you can imagine, there are a lot more programs at the school, athletics, music programs that fall into that. And then again, that does not include the 10% contingency, it also does not include the per-letter cost of the school. Also, at the high school level, we also get into the turf and the letters there, and if those need to be replaced and, and that sort of thing. And so, those are the costs associated with each. And as you all recall, in February, I did some research, and I took a look at what was happening across the Commonwealth. And Fairfax recently did some renaming, Alexandria City Schools recently did some renaming. But right here in our own backyard, we do have some school divisions in Hampton Roads that are going through or have gone through the process. So we know that Portsmouth Public Schools recently renamed three schools. And then we have Hampton City Schools who just voted to rename five schools by, by next fall, coming up for the next school year. And Newport News voted to rename four out of the 10 that they identified in their first tier. And so, they are also undergoing that process. So that just kind of gives you some context of what's happening here in Hampton Roads. And so, now we can move on to the next slide. So if you recall, we talked about your policy FFA for naming schools and facilities and the process that happens there. And so, as part of this process, there is a public hearing that takes place. You have the ability to establish a committee at the division level. We also discussed whether or not we do establish committees at the individual schools that then feed into that division level committee. And then they will undergo, take on the process of engaging the community. And that's what we're here to talk about today, the options that you have available for you in that process. And so, the process for community engagement will align with this policy and these procedures, again, with the public hearing, the public announcement of the name, and the solicitation of suggestions for the names. And so, if we move on to the next slide, oops, excuse me. As you can see, there's a number of ways you can go about it, and the timeline can differ. Originally, looking at your brag for naming of new school facilities, the suggestion is six months. Also, in my research, I found that the majority of the school divisions that have gone through this process have also followed a six-month process. Fairfax originally, when they renamed their first school back in 2017, they actually took 18 months to do it. And then, I think they got their legs under them, and they got a feel for the process. And so, they just recently renamed one of their high schools that was named for Robert E. Lee. They changed it to civil rights icon John Lewis, and that was just in 2020, and they took six months to do that process. Newport News just announced their process, and it is also six months. They have, did their first vote back in November, they established their committee, I'm sorry, they voted in September, and then established their committee in November. And then they launched their survey in March. They solicited names and have gathered them, and they are expected to do their final vote on those names on May 12th. So that's just an example. So you do have some leeway if you choose to stick with six months or somewhere in between, but that seems to be what's happening around the Commonwealth. If we move on to the next slide, Ms. Tanner? And so, again, that was the policy and sort of the process behind that policy. So if we move to the next slide, we'll look at the community engagement options. And the best example for this I saw with Arlington is where they had multiple schools. They had to decide whether they were going to do it simultaneous or do it one at a time. And basically, those are the options that we're looking at today. And so, if you decide to do it simultaneous, you'll, again, all schools will undergo this community engagement and renaming process. All the schools will follow the, oops, excuse me, the six-month timeline, or if you choose a different timeline, you can have one renaming committee, or again, you can have one for all three. It might work better if you just have one renaming committee if you're going to do all the schools at once. And then there's one public hearing, once you start soliciting the names to get the feedback from the public on those names. And then, there will be another public hearing after the final names are selected and received from the committee. So that's option one, is to do all three if you decide to rename all three simultaneously. Next slide. Option two is to do an independent renaming process, essentially just using the six-month timeline as an example, you would just do the six-month process per each school. And so, it's everything that I just shared, but it would be done one at a time, independent from each other. Again, that allows for you to have individual renaming committees at the school that then work with the division level committee. And some school divisions have chosen to do it that way. It all depends on, you know, the timing of this, when you elect to do it, the target date for when it would be completed, and what else is happening that would factor into that. So those are the two options that align best with policy FFA. If we move on to the next slide. And so, our next steps here are to, again, determine if you're going to rename all three of those schools, and then you select which community engagement option you'd like to go with, and establish the timeline, identify the start date, the target date for completion, and also considering that we're getting ready to undergo the strategic planning process. And so, that's something else that you are also about to embark on engaging the community as part of. There is another opportunity to integrate the two, there is a way to align all of those goals, but it could be, become overwhelming to the public. So that is something to consider as you think of your timeline. And then, from there, you would establish the renaming committee or committees if you choose to do so, and then go ahead and finalize the cost. As I said, some of those cost estimates still did not include everything that would be part of the renaming. So that's where we are with our options. I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Question about the cost. So particularly with the high school, if renaming is over five hundred thousand dollars, how would, I guess I'm trying to, trying to understand spending that kind of money on a school that needs to be rehabbed. So by, how much, so if you're building a new school and you're putting a name on it, is that still five hundred thousand dollars? Is that portion of the school naming five hundred thousand dollars? Or is it because you have to take things down?
I think it's because of you're having to take things down and take things off of the existing building.
Okay.
I don't know, colleague, if I'm answering that correctly. Mr. Crowley, thank you.
It would be a lot, but not as significant.
Correct, because when you're erecting a new facility, then you have the opportunity to put up the new letters of the name, to have the field turf done and the correct name, mascot, team name. So all of that would be factored into a new building, whereas you're having to redo those things on an older building.
Okay, thank you.
Leechers, all kinds of stuff, yeah. Thank you.
Ms. Bassin and then Ms. Campson.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. So my question is similar to what Dr. Martin just asked about, you know, we, we have the possibility of replacing and renovating a building that is on one of those renaming lists. And we also, so, which leads me to my question around, not only do we have the strategic planning process in place, we also have the educational planning process in place, which would impact, you know, Ruffner as well, because that's one of the schools that's included in the educational planning work, in which, you know, the grade configuration may change, the thematic programming of a school may change. How do you, I guess, you know, you talked about integrating these processes together, and that is another piece that I feel we need to integrate into this process. So, you know, I'm, I'm sure everyone's thinking about that as well, when we think about timeline. Have you had, in the other districts that you've researched and examined, have they been in these similar, you know, have these similar processes going on at the same time? And how, how might we move forward? Because the other thing that I'm considering is, if we have one overall naming committee, then, you know, I know for some schools, you know, the school community, if it's a neighborhood zone school, that neighborhood, or, you know, the zone, the attended zone may want to, you know, have, you know, want to really be involved in the naming. So, I don't know, I, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of asking you what your thoughts are, if the administration has already thought about that, and come up with a plan or a recommendation around when we might, when and how we might start this process.
Sure, we have had some preliminary conversations about it. I certainly can make some recommendations. Just here speaking, it is a lot to kind of take in and to really be present and have that authentic engagement. It might be a bit much to do, but it can be done. From what I've found in the research, I did not see any other school district that was undergoing strategic planning or this type of community engagement process at the same time of also renaming. So, that's not to say that it, there isn't any, but I just didn't come across any in the examples that I found. But there is a way to do it, you know? When you are facilitating your engagement sessions in these particular school communities, you know, this could be a priority for them, as we're talking to them about what their priorities are, what they want for their children, they may want their child to walk into a school that is named for someone that represents something different than what it's named for right now. So there are ways to match these goals and objectives together, but we do need to be mindful that it could be a lot. And we want to make sure that the focus is clear on what it's supposed to be on. So I would leave that to you all to decide if it makes sense to separate them.
So, I mean, with that in mind, you know, one thought I would have is, obviously, we start, we may start with the school that is not tied, well, I guess, you know, because of strategic planning, it could be tied, but we know that two of the three schools are directly impacted through the educational planning work. So that we might integrate the naming process into that, you know, the educational planning process. Although, you know, all three schools could definitely be impacted by it. But anyway, I, I'm just thinking out loud, but I'll defer to my colleagues' questions.
Do you have a response to Ms. Bassin?
Yeah, just a statement, I support us moving forward with it and integrating it with the process.
Ms. Campson, go ahead.
Thank you. I know that the board has voted to allow schools to be renamed with the names of other people, but as we move forward, I hope we can keep in mind that we still have the option not to name them after people, just because they're currently named after people for political reasons. And that's why through the last decades, as other buildings opened in Norfolk, Tanner's Creek, where schools were not replacement buildings, but it was a brand-new school, Gett, another example that have been done in the last few decades, they were named for the neighborhood in which they, they presided. Maury High School, as we all learned with that great presentation we had from the historians, was named Norfolk High School, the first public high school in the city, which is something to be proud of and remember. And, and in Portsmouth, they just renamed Woodrow Wilson and went back to its original name, which was named after the area in which it was located. And, and when you name, replace one name with another name, there's a lot of divisiveness that's caused by that. And there was a reason all that was stopped. It was started for a political reason, a very negative political reason, and, and to start it again, you know, 20, 25 years from now, someone's name might be on a school that didn't eat, that ate red meat or something, and they decided, no, we don't do that anymore because we don't kill animals. So it could be anything. So I'd like us to know that we still should have the option to name Maury High School, return it to its original name, or the same with the other schools, right in the neighborhoods, West Gett School, Norfolk Middle School or something, should be an option that we seem to not talk about, and I'm afraid that would make the committee think that they have to name it after a person and go back to something that was done over a century ago, and we're starting to do the same thing again. So if we could just let that, make everyone know that that's an option they can choose, like the board voted as an option, that it could be named after a person, but that didn't mean it can't be named after the neighborhood in which it's located. I never went to a school that wasn't named after the neighborhood it was located in. Only coming to Norfolk did I see all these people's names on schools. Think it was something that happened in cities more than anyplace else. So anyway, thank you for letting me add that, but I just want us to keep that in mind when we're giving presentations and stuff, that it's an option to go to naming schools for their location.
Thank you, Ms. Campson. Mr. Clayton, go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Two of the schools I went to, so this is always one of those, and, and as an elementary school student going to Taylor Elementary, I never thought about.
Yeah, my son was at, yeah, my son went to Taylor also.
And it was, and I was in the old Taylor. I just knew that it was a hospital during the Civil War. And we learned about the yellow fever down the corner, you know, the graveyard site that was there, but never knew what it was until I had the opportunity to go to Maury High School and participate. And when we offered it, I took African-American studies. And when I had that opportunity, that's when I began to learn about other portions of history that were not taught to me. And so, I'm glad that the Dream Department of Education is taking that opportunity to allow us to have that back in there. But every time this topic comes up, I'm quite sure I'm going to get the email, or emails, about how sensitive this topic is, about renaming. And I will say that my, that you're giving us two proposals here about the committees, whether or not there's a large committee, and whether or not there are individual committees. And I personally believe that there need to be individual, community-based committees that really show diversity amongst generations, diversity amongst the populations and the feeder groups that go into those particular schools, because I believe that those voices need to be heard. And, you know, I've had, you know, for me personally, I would just say, hey, you know, I agree with Ms. Campson, I learned a whole lot. The Daughter of the Confederacy had a lot to do with renaming, and this city has a whole lot. You know, we learn in respect that African-American schools were named so that you could identify that that was a black school, and you don't send your white child or whoever else to that particular school than white schools in the way. We have an ugly past that we have to deal with. And this is one of those courageous moments that as citizens in this community that we have to do. And that's why I think that this process allows it to go back to the community to hear their voices, because at the end of the day, as we're going through this process now about our goals and our guardrails, ultimately, it's the final decision of the community to send us a recommendation as a board that we'll have to take a courageous action on. So I just, my recommendation would be that we move forward. I don't think that we hold back on this particular piece here, but we need to make sure that we put some type of mechanism in place to ensure, just like we're having our advisory task forces, that we have equal representation from the community level. I believe that their voices need to be heard. I believe that an overarching type of committee may allow that to be kind of diluted some, but allowing that to come back so that we can have a recommendation, so that we can move forward on this particular item here. And so, so option two is the one that I would support and moving forward with that. And just for the record, you know, I know when we look at five hundred thousand dollars for a high school, my own personal recommendation would be just take the Matthew Fontaine off of Maury and call it Norfolk Maury High School and call it a day. But that's my own personal opinion, but I'll listen to what the community has to say. Thank you.
You need to get on a committee in order to make that recommendation.
Thank you for that, Mr. Clinton. I will note, as I mentioned, the process that's taking place in Newport News. What they did is they actually established an equity and diversity task force that is overseeing their process, so that is also something to consider as well.
Ms. Matthews, that's kind of something that I've been trying to envision, is the makeup of the committees. So I was hoping that you could talk to us about the pros and cons of the diversity of a simultaneous committee versus the separate committees.
Sure, and I think that's part of what Mr. Clayton just shared. I think when you have the independent committees that represent the individual schools that are up for renaming, that allows you to really dive in to the community and hear their specific that allows you to really dive in to the community and hear their specific voice. There is an opportunity to do that at a division level with one simultaneous committee. Just, you have to be very deliberate and intentional about making sure you have that representation for all three schools. If you do all three schools, Newport News's task force is 15 people. And so, there's an opportunity to have, you know, five from all three schools if you wanted to do something similar. And as Mr. Clayton shared, you know, representing all backgrounds, all walks of life, generationally.
Five.
Yeah, but five, right. And then there's other ways that we would help to facilitate the engagement process to ensure that, you know, we capture the student voice. Whether or not you have students part of the committee or not, there's still ways to include them. When I was with Richmond Public Schools, and we renamed one of our elementary schools that was named for Jeb Stuart, we renamed it to Barack Obama Elementary School, the students were very heavily involved in that process, and they came up with the top five names and worked with the committee. So, there are ways to engage the staff, engage the students, alumni, community members, and making sure you're representing all. So, you know, the individual school ones will help you really dive in deep, and you can show without a doubt, this represents this school community. Whereas a larger community, like I said, you have to be intentional in making sure that it's representative. It just so happens we have the nice number of three. So, again, however you decide to do that, you can make that one committee, or you can make three individuals. There are a lot of different ways to approach it.
Yeah, I'm thinking it'd be interesting to see if, you know, particularly with the elementary schools, if one went in one direction and another went in a different direction. I, I kind of was hoping for, and not that we made a decision, but, you know, we still needed to do that and have that conversation. But I was hoping for a, the simultaneous approach, because I think it's an opportunity for both educating and including a lot of people on the committee, and understanding, you bring the, like, the greater community together and, and through this process.
And you can certainly still have those individuals for all three schools, and then they could make up one big committee, and you could bring them together. Because the neat thing about what we're going through is those schools represent all three grade levels. And so, that's another opportunity to just bring them all together and make one big committee, but then they still focus on the individual work of their school committee. That could essentially be the larger committee here.
Ms. Bassin?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a couple clarifying points, you know, to my earlier comments. So, I want to, just, just so everyone is clear about what I was suggesting about, in terms of integrating it with the educational planning process, I wasn't suggesting that we use the educational planning task force to be that committee. I was not, you know, I was not suggesting that at all. So, I just wanted to make that clear. My point about integrating it is that, you know, and I'm going to use this as an example, it's a made-up example, I'm going to say that. Let's just say, like, Ruffner Middle School, you know, the committee says, you know, based on, you know, you know, maybe enrollment projections or whatever, that they want to change the boundaries. And that perhaps it becomes a citywide 3-8 school that may have a Montessori program or some other program in it, you know, some thematic program. And so, that obviously would impact the name, right? So, and it would also impact the community, you know, who we define as the community that may want to be involved in the naming process. Because you would obviously want to involve, you know, if it's a citywide program, you would want to have your committee be a citywide committee. So, that's, when I say integrating it, that's what's going through my mind, is that, you know, who we define as the naming committee, you know, what kind of program might it have? And once again, I'm going to repeat, it's not, no one said it's going to be a Montessori program. I'm just using that as an example. You know, we don't know what grade configuration is going to be there. It could be an elementary, you know, a 3-8, could be, you know, just a middle, you know, a 6-8. You know, that's all to be determined. So, that's what I meant by integrating it and, and into that process. So, I just wanted to clarify that point.
Naming it after its location would solve that problem.
What's that?
Naming it after the location of the building would solve the problem that you just brought up.
It, it could, it could, but we're, we're saying here, you know, right now, that we're committed to engaging the community. Even though the policy clearly states that it is, you know, the, the school board makes the final decision, but we are still committed to engaging the community in the naming process. So, until we define who that community is, which may come about as part of the educational planning work, you know, we, we right now, you know, I don't, I personally don't recommend us saying, you know, that's going to be the ex, you know, whatever, the geographic area of that school, and done, we're not going to engage the community. That may be a decision that the board makes, but that's not what I'm hearing based on what you've, you know, presented to us. And I also think we, we have a family and community engagement policy set that says that we are going to engage, you know, that we will engage our families in the decision-making process. So, I'm pretty certain that we wouldn't go that route. But anyway, I just wanted to clarify that point.
Go ahead.
I support us moving forward with considering renaming. I'm not sure if it would be limited to three. I know the, from the historical research last year, that there were three that were clearly identified in terms of connections to the Confederacy, but there were others that were also less obvious in terms of connection to slavery or, or other issues there. But I do think we should just make a decision to go forward. I think I would be more in favor of one universal committee to deal with this. And my rationale for that is much of what we are discussing, discussing is rooted in our Jim Crow racially segregated legacy that we, that we have. And a lot of that is driven by our housing policies. So, we talk neighborhoods, many of our neighborhoods are demographically established the way they are because of historic racial segregation patterns, laws, racial covenants, and so forth. And I think if we, at least for now, still aspire to be the cornerstone of a proudly diverse community, then we ought to bring together a proudly diverse group of citizens who can work together as schools being a part of the school system as a whole, and school success being something that is owned by the community as a whole, so that we can transition Norfolk and our city from simply talking about the neighborhood or certain groups or certain sides of the city or certain wards and all the things that we have codified that, in my opinion, keep us divided. And if we're going to go down this path, then I think we have one renaming committee or one committee that we can have people to volunteer, apply. We can make appointments, whatever that process is per the policy. But I think if we're going to go down this path, then it would serve us well to have a group that's going to see this as an opportunity to do something for the school division in the city as a whole versus seeing it as an action for individual schools or individual parts of the city or individual communities.
Thank you for that, Mr. Jordan. That did remind me, I mean, that's really a lot of what, where I was coming to. I wasn't as articulate as you. But, but the, I've, I've been concerned about, you know, playing out the different scenarios in my mind, about, you know, the very limited amount of spaces that will be on this committee as representation of each of the school communities. And, you know, just the lobbying and the advocating that could really take over. And so, yeah, anyways, it, it, that's really a lot of what I've been trying to grapple with is how do you really get diversity from one community that, you know, might really love, you know, have a lot of pride in their neighborhood, in their school, and, but wouldn't be looking at it from the bigger picture. And, you know, we're, our, we're here now. You know, we all were in, we all went to a school that we're, you know, hopefully very proud of, but we're not there anymore. You know, you, this is just one minute phase in a very long, many chain of phases throughout, you know, these children's lives. Obviously, we want it to be impactful and we want it to be positive. And, but again, you know, I, again, I go, I go back to I hope they have pride in their school, and I want them to add, but I also want to look at the big picture about the next generation that's going to come into that school. So, we're not back here 20 years from now changing names again. Go ahead.
Thank you. I, I support having a universal committee, and I think that would also alleviate some of the concern I have about, you know, how are we defining the, the community or the committees for each of the schools. So, if we had a diverse and inclusive naming committee, that would, you know, I think that would work well to address some of, you know, what I was trying to get at. So, I do support that.
Okay. Any other comments about the community engagement? Mr. Clayton?
Yeah, I won't belabor it. But I could go with a single diverse committee that truly is diverse and representative. You know, as long as the process gets moved along and that there are equal opportunities for the voices to be heard, is my major piece. And, you know, and there's another thing too. I mean, people have to, and hopefully there's some component, I know that you've done a great job, and, and as we've done in our, in educating and, and providing that information, because I think that the committee also needs to be educated. They need to provide the same amount of information that we got during our retreat as to why things, certain, certain things in the way that they are. So, if we move to a universal one, but there's a commitment to making sure that there are diverse voices and generational voices that are heard in there, I, I can go with that. I just want the process to be as clean as it can possibly be so that we can have a representation that's presenting a recommendation to the board so that we can take an action on it at some particular point in time. So, thank you, Ms. Sher.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Matthews, and we'll have this as a future agenda item. So, work that in.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Speaking of future agenda items, next on our, on our agenda is future agenda items 3.01. Hands are flying. Ms. Campson, go ahead, and then, then Dr. Gabriel.
Once again, as I bring up at every meeting, I'm bringing up Fairlon, which is a school in good condition, a building in good condition, and we have not made any arrangements for it. And at this point, my question is, are we just letting it sit there vacant all year for the next year? Because we've not, not done anything. We had a good, one good idea with Easton, I thought it was part of the plan, apparently not. But, which is a falling apart school located in the middle of nowhere with a twisty hard road to get to and not a good facility to have our kids in. And that was one of the main ideas we were saying, and we could have been doing that or something else. But to leave the building there in a time when we have a declining enrollment in our schools, and we continue to have these buildings open that are underutilized, and now we're going to leave a perfectly good building open for a whole year, it seems like. And maybe that's wrong, but I, that's why I bring this up every meeting to hear what's happening with, with Fairlon. And that still hasn't been put on the agenda. So, that's, you know, every, every month I'm here bringing it up, and I still haven't seen it on the agenda for discussion, what's happening to Fairlon next year. So, thank you for letting me add that to a possibility again.
Thanks, Ms. Campson. Dr. Gabriel?
Thank you. I, not to get into discussion, but I would like to have the topic of Maury High School, what the plan is for the board, direction that we can give to the administration for what the next steps are, including renovation or replacement. I'd like to move on that. It was a separate item that we took outside of the facility condition index study. So, I'd like to have that as a future agenda item, please.
Ms. Smith?
Yeah, just want to say I support the Easton and Fairlon initiative also.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I support the Easton and Fairlon initiative also. Having that as an agenda item.
Okay. Mr. Clayton, go ahead.
Dr. Martin, I just have a, a personal privilege. Once we've talked about this one here, I just wanted to give a recognition before we move into the next item. I said I just had a, a personal, an item of personal privilege to address. Nothing crazy, but once we finish with this particular item, before we move into the next.
Ms. Bassin?
I, well, I guess if, if, whenever, when you get a chance, if you could share, well, and I guess this is kind of up, up in the air since we are, you know, doing this work with the Council of Great City Schools. But one of the things that would be helpful for me is, you know, trying to get a sense of what our agenda topics are going out so that we aren't asking, you know, for the same updates at every meeting, just as Ms. Campson described. You know, you may have Fairlon and Easton on the agenda for, you know, I'm not saying it is, I'm just saying it's hard for me to know what's coming so that, you know, or for our board to know what's coming so that we're not always asking for the same thing. And same with Maury, which may be included with educational planning. You know, I, I, I think that would be helpful for all of us if something like that was, you know, posted somewhere where we would know what to expect. And to that end, you know, for instance, one of the, you know, and I mentioned it earlier in our meeting, but Open Campus is also one that I've asked about. We haven't had an update on it in a couple of years, actually. And that's something I would like for us to examine. I mean, not examine, but, you know, get an update on, on where we are with that. And tied to our earlier discussion, if there may be opportunities to expand, enhance, whatever, you know, I would just like an update. And that may already be planned, but I'm just making sure that that stays on the table.
I do have a master list of future agenda items and, that I have sitting there when we're doing agenda planning to try to work in.
Okay. But I mean, if we, if we have something like what we had a couple of years ago, like, you know.
On Board Docs?
Yeah, in Board Docs that had, okay, April's work session is going, these are the topics.
Yeah, we're just not at that level yet, right. So, what I'm saying is, we plan out what we absolutely know we need to do. We're also going through scrutinizing everything we're putting on the agenda through this governance training and trying to make sure that we don't have really long meetings. You know, so we're trying to be reasonable with, with time as well because there is such thing as decision fatigue, and we meet, you know, late, and sometimes it goes late and it becomes counterproductive. So, just trying to be mindful of all, of early everything. And, but I do have a list that we try to work in. I did look at what was on Board Docs before, and there weren't dates next to them that I recall.
It may have been before you came on the board, so, but.
We're, we're trying to also repopulate the library. You'll see that today Ms. Tanner added our governance training documents to the library as well. And I, they should be live links if she's able to do that so that, you know, they're, they're the actual updated links that we've been using through Google Docs as well.
Am I, oh.
Did you have another one?
Just a final clarifying question. So, in our governance training on May 19th begins at 11?
Yes.
Okay.
AM.
And A.J. and Cindy will be in person. AM is what he said.
Oh, oh, okay.
Yeah, like a whole full day of work.
We, we're not doing an all-nighter. It's an all-dayer. Go ahead.
Dr. Martin, Board, I know we normally don't respond during the agenda item section, but I just wanted to share since some of the questions came up about the, the agenda. So, we, we do need to do a better job of making sure that whether it's in the draft agenda and people understand it's a draft, that we can share what's upcoming. But I wanted to. But I wanted to say that the, the facilities, um, conversations, the Maury, the Fairlon, the, the Easton, the different buildings and programming, all of that, it has, is tied with the educational planning and the facilities portions of that. And, um, and so what we discussed at Monday's agenda planning, I believe it's in June, we, uh, Dr. Birdsong will be coming with, uh, cooperative strategies to come and give us an update on recommendations and, and where we are with that. The various, um, school closures, combining programs that we've done over the last several years, all of that has been driven in large measure by recommendations that have come through that process. Um, and also the impact on the CIP as relates to new construction and closing facilities. All of that has been part of that process that has been a pretty open process, uh, so far. So just wanted to at least let everyone know that the plan is to receive a presentation update at the June work session and that, um, issues around Fairlon and Easton and Maury and others, Booker T., Ruffner, uh, may present a good opportunity for us to get where we are with those and, and ask questions about it, uh, at that time. So I just wanted to share that based upon, uh, Monday's agenda planning.
Mr. Jordan? Okay.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Martin. Um, I just wanted to, um, like I said, take a personal privilege here. I wanted to thank Dr. Birdsong and the members of her team, as well as the members of the Booker T. Washington alumni and others for years who have talked about conditions of the baseball and softball field, um, yesterday. Um, through a lot of hard work and Mr. Fraley, um, and, you know, just everyone who worked around that. Yesterday, our students, athletes at Booker T. were able to play their first home game. They didn't have to go anywhere else. They played, um, on their baseball field and their softball field. I know, I think it's like phase two now and there's some other work that's happening there. Um, but that was a good feeling for those students. Um, and when we talk about equity and we talk about our schools, um, we just have to realize that a lot of, Booker T. was forgotten in many respects, but I appreciate, um, the, the work and listening to the community and listening to that, that school body there, um, that that was a good shot in the arm for those students to be able to, um, to play on their own home fields. And I know that there is continued work that we'll continue to do all the way across the division. But I wanted to publicly thank you all and to thank those voices of those who may be watching today, um, who have come before us, come before this board, um, to express concerns, um, that we are listening and we are taking action. And so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Great. Um, so next up on our agenda is the, um, you all should have a printed packet right here. We're very familiar with this tool.
Can we?
Evaluation tool. And so let me ask first, do you guys want to take five? Recce for five? Okay. All right, so let's, um, meet back here at six, I'll give you another minute, so six twenty-two. Okay? Six twenty-two. Everyone? Um, okay, so the next agenda item is, um, we're going to use this Guidelines for Uniform Performance Standards and Evaluation Criteria for Superintendents, which is a document by the Virginia Department of Education? Okay, sorry. We're good? Okay. So we're, we've all, we're all familiar with this tool. We've used it, we've been trained on it. Um, so I'm kind of taking this process a step back or a step up, um, so that we can, we can go through, um, 'cause, 'cause what we're doing here is we're really, you know, we keep, we're in this limbo stage. We're doing everything simultaneously. We're, um, you know, the, we're driving the car and changing the tire. What's the one you said earlier, Mr. Jordan? What's the one you said earlier? You had another one. Anyway, so we come up with all these ways of saying it, but, um, that, um, we're, we're, we still have old, older or old established processes, but we're trying to do better moving forward. And so what I thought we could do, um, is look at this, go through this exercise of going through each of the seven performance standards and coming up with specific, I guess, specific, um, items that we would be looking for to indicate Dr. Birdsong's performance or any superintendent's performance for that matter. Um, we're not talking about Dr. Birdsong as an individual. That would be an executive se- session item. Um, I'd like to start here and go through each of these, and I gave some examples, um, such as, um, communication and community relations, um, communication, how do we communicate? Through the website, through newsletters, email, you know, things like that, two by twos. Um, so that's the kind of thing I want us to list out so that in the next phase of putting together an evaluation, that we are not just focusing on one particular situation, that we're, we, we are reminded that there are multiple wa- means of communication that are occurring. So, um, and, and I really see this as laying the groundwork for next year. Um, and what I've asked Dr. Birdsong to do is if the, if, and we go around and we name a list out, if she thinks there's something that's off the list, then I'd like her to speak up and say, you know, I did also do this, or this, this means of communication, I see as a means of communication. But this isn't about an evaluation of Dr. Birdsong right now. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, thank you to, uh, Dr. Martin. So essentially, Dr. Martin, you're looking at page six in this document?
Yes.
Um, so we're gonna, we're gonna do high level, performance standards going through one through seven. And then I guess what I'm hearing is that then we're gonna look through each one of these performance standards and look at the performance, the recommended performance indicators and determine whether or not these, we agree or don't agree or we want to change them.
No, what I'm saying is, um, the performance, so under mission, vision and goals, unique to Norfolk Public Schools, how, um, how, what tools do we have to explain our, you know, our mission, our superintendent? You're judging some of the superintendent on mission, vision and goals.
Yeah, but on page seven, it gets into the indicators, which are the unified, these are the suggested ones from the Department of Education. So what I'm hearing, what I'm trying to understand is that we're gonna go and look at mission, vision and goals, and then it's got a statement, and then it has some sample, um, indicators. They got one through nine here. So are we gonna go through each one of these to say if we agree with it or if there are ones that we want to change and then come as a board on that?
Well, I was thinking more, um, more specific. So I, I, I know they use the word indicators and I'm using it in a slightly different way. Um, meaning, do we, do we have a mission, vision and goals? And if we do, where would we find that?
But that's... Um, what I'm, what I'm trying to figure out is because we, we have all gone through the training. And so my thing is, is that if the performance standard one is mission, vision and goals, and it states the superintendent works with the local school board to formulate and implement the school division mission, vision and goals to promote student academic progress. That's a statement that's unified from the Department of Education. Then 1.1 is works with the school board to develop and recommend policies that define organizational expectations and effectively communicates these to all stakeholders. So that's an indicator. And I'm saying, are we going through each one of these to say, do we agree with that? Is this one that we want to keep? Because these are suggested, but...
These are suggested, we were allowed to change them.
Exactly, but I'm just saying to kind of keep it going along. Are we just gonna go through these to identify them and then tweak them? And I, I think, my recommendation is that we go through each one of them and look at the indicators and to find out whether or not we agree or don't agree and we change. And that might help with this statement focus.
So I guess what I'm saying is, um, if you want to look at the first one, works with school board to develop recommend and recommend policies to define, I mean, I'm, I don't want to say, because I don't want this to be an evaluation of any real person.
No, I'm not getting anything to say yes or no, that she's doing this or not.
Something that I'm trying to stay away from.
I'm just saying, are we identifying that as something that we value and that we want to measure?
That we have a policy process that, um, that where they, where policies are developed and recommended? Yes, that would be, that would be an indicator that I think that we would, that we would name instead of using this terminology here right now.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I guess my suggestion is that it might help us to keep this moving along if we look at what's suggested, and if we want to tweak a particular one, that we tweak them. Um, but I, that's just my suggestion. I don't, Dr. Birdsong?
Go ahead, Dr. Birdsong.
Uh, I have a suggestion. Um, so each of the performance standards, as you all know, um, have several examples of performance indicators. These are all examples. And so I, I think the, the purpose of having, um, the examples as noted here is, is to provide a little more flexibility in allowing a superintendent to be able to demonstrate their performance in, in each of these areas. So what I would suggest, if I understand what you're trying to accomplish tonight, I would suggest not eliminating any of these, uh, performance indicators, because all of this is research-based. And so I, I would, I would strongly advise you against going through and eliminating some things. But if you wanted to supplement some of the performance indicators, then, then, you know, I, I think that would be...
I'm not saying to eliminate or whatever. I'm saying to think more, um, about NPS and what we do every day and how, um, I'm tr- I'm trying to make sure that when we're looking at each of these standards, that we have a comprehensive view, considering what's here too. Um, it's just the language, I just don't want it, I don't want to sit here and says it works or doesn't work, promotes or doesn't promote, you know? So I'm trying to say, so if we do say, again, um, let me look at a different one. Uh, keeps the school board informed on needs and issues confronting school division employees and students. So if we were looking at this information, so how do we get our inf- how are we, how are, what, in what ways are we informed on needs and issues confronting school division employees and students? So are we get, do we, where do we look for that information? So that when we are going through the assessment, we are all considering the one, two, three means, I guess maybe means, of getting that information when we're do- when we're, when we're doing the individual assessment. Because what I found in, um, going through this in the past, is that one person is just talking about emails, emails, emails. And emails are, you know, sometimes a part of a bigger communication, you, array of communication means. So we didn't, you know, maybe didn't spend a lot of time talking about newsletters. We didn't spend a lot of ti- you know, time talking about, um, about, um, you know, social, uh, maybe social media, whatever. Would, however, the communication, all of the communication measures. And so it's, it tended to be very narrow and very, almost anecdotal, instead of a broader assessment of all of the communications. Does that make sense? So that's what I'm trying to get at here. Ms. Bassin, go ahead.
I, uh, in looking at this, you know, I, um, and, and based on some of the, the workshops that we've done around superintendent evaluations, I think, you know, as Dr. Birdsong said, these are research-based indicators. But we might want to hone in on, as you said, Dr. Martin, you know, specifically, you know, related to NPS, what our, our goals are. And then I think what you're trying to get at is what is our evidence of the performance of that particular indicator? So, you know, every, all seven of us, or actually all eight of us, might have different ideas about what that evidence is. But I think one of the things that we might want to think about is what evidence do we want to, um, you know, assess any one of these indicators? Um, and then think of it more broad, you know, broadly or more specifically to NPS as we engage in this work around strategic planning, engage around educational planning. You know, I know we've all had equity as a top priority. The administration has had equity and excellence as their top priority. I think that one of our main goals should be, or for the superintendent, uh, maybe, you know, to, to, uh, you know, develop and articulate and, and be able to implement equitable strategies that promote academics, student academic outcomes, as well as social and emotional outcomes. That may be something that if we could agree to, is something that we want to establish as a goal in which Dr. Birdsong then, you know, I'm giving an example, a piece of evidence for that particular goal may be that we have a district-wide equity plan, um, that is provided to us. And it may be a district-wide equity and strategic plan, you know, as part of the strategic planning process, but that would be our piece of evidence. And I'm just, I'm just throwing out examples. Do you know what I mean? It's, am I ma-?
Yeah.
Am I making sense to everybody? That you have that evidence, we all agree that that is the evidence that we want. And then we could, you know, based on what's, you know, how we're doing, um, that would be an evaluation tool, a piece of the tool.
Dr. Birdsong?
So based on what Mrs. Bassin just, um, offered, would it be, it would be more strategic, in my opinion, if, as we're going through this process of working with the Council of Great City Schools and the board is currently in the midst of developing goals and guardrails, I think having those goals and guardrails in place would get you in a better position to determine what evidence that you're seeking. Because right now, you're gonna perhaps be all over the place with, oh, we may want this, we may want that. But if you have those goals and guardrails in place, that will give you, um, a roadmap to, you know, what it is that you want me to accomplish as, as your superintendent and what evidence to provide, if that makes sense. I think we're trying to guess right now, and, and we may go kind of round and round, but I think the work with the Council of Great City Schools in establishing those goals, because we have not done that yet. We haven't established any mutual goals, uh, you know, with the, with the governance team. And I think that would strongly help this, this process move along more.
Yeah, it would be, it would be much better if we did have those goals. But I, I was not, I was really trying to keep this as a light, quick kind of, there's a multiple step process to my method, method, my process. So, um, I, I was really trying to keep it light and really go down and say, like I said, um, to try to come up with some identifying, uh, areas that we would look to and hear from everyone and build a collective list. Um, Ms. Smith, go ahead. Ms. Smith, uh, Ms. Campson and Dr. Gabriel.
So I agree with what Mrs. Bassin has said. Something that I had written down for the first one was something like create a plan with specific goals, a limited amount of goals that we want to accomplish this year, based on what we already have in place. We have to go with what we have in place, our priorities. And these are the set things that we want to accomplish this year. Implement them, monitor them, that's what I keep saying about reporting out to the board how well we're progressing towards the goals that we set. Um, if they're not working well, then there's that opportunity to say, we're not getting the outcome that we want. We revise it, or it's revised. And then we continue to progress forward towards the plan that a superintendent says this is what they want to accomplish within a district, um, based on the priorities that we have in place. That's what I see or envision.
Smith, um, Ms.?
I have other stuff written, but that's...
Oh, did, what's that?
I have more written, but that's the gist of what I kind of envisioned us doing.
Ms. Campson?
Oh, thank you. That, I, you had some really good points.
You had some really good points there. I agreed with Dr. Birdsong. I think we need to get this done for next year. And I think that we definitely need to be basing it on the goals and guardrails that we put in place. When the state put all these, put these evaluation forms in place and they did it for every single group of employees in the district, and it worked its way up, the superintendent was the last one done. And what happened with each of those is the commit, we got this same idea, the same standards are for everyone, the bullets under them are applied to that particular job. And so, what we did, because I worked on the teacher one, I was on committees for two of these standards, we started, as Dr. Birdsong said, we didn't take any of these out because they're all research-based and for this particular, for each of these particular standards, which were, the state's put a lot of time on it. But what we did is, we then, we looked and we thought, well, Norfolk Public Schools, we have a strategic plan that's based on data-driven decision-making, what comes from that that could fit? And in some places, we didn't change anything. And in some of the standards, we changed a number of things. But it didn't happen like real fast. You know, we were a committee, we worked for a while on it, we had a deadline because the state had given us a deadline to put in the one I was working on, which was the teacher one. So, when we look at it, I don't think we should be removing anything that's here. But I think that we need to have space to be able to put one, maybe addition or two, or some places, no additions needed, so that we'll have that as we move forward to next year. That's why this is good work to do. It's just, I'm not sure that it could happen fast.
Well, I'm not asking, again, I'm asking, so if, if we said a superintendent provides leadership in development of a shared vision for educational improvement that inspires employees to work collaboratively, where would we, where would you look to, where would you look to answer that? Or to say, to assess that?
Yeah. And I see what you're saying because the problem we had, we've had sometimes, is that we're not putting evaluation feedback under the right standard because it's not related there. So we definitely need to align them. I'm not disagreeing. I think this is a great idea and this is an activity we need to do. It might be something at the retreat, but I think that's gonna be hard to kind of just do it today. Because this is a process that you have to really think about and we don't have, you know, we're not using it based on the accountability plan. We're now using it based on the goals and guardrails that we are going to be establishing, I guess, in the summer. So...
We don't have the goals and guardrails right now, so...
Yeah, that's what I said. So it makes it hard for us to add anything to these different parts because you have to take what you're doing and plug it in to the document that the state has us doing, which is very well researched and really top educators put this together, not us. But we then can adapt it to what we have when we get it. Because my understanding from what I'm reading is, the accountability plan's out, so we don't have anything to determine what we're putting in here. But we will have, with the governance program, training program we're going through, is, are we ready to do this now? Is kind of what I'm thinking. Because I've been thinking about it and I thought, I'm not sure how we can do that when we don't have our plan in place.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Gabriel, and then Ms. Basine, then Ms. Smith.
When I think of the superintendent's evaluation, I think of where we can go with this. And, Dr. Martin, I like how, you know, you're trying to kind of take it from this tool, which is universal for Virginia. If we take a step back and, as I was explaining it to another individual, the board, if you think of the board as the owner of a team, of a professional team, you can say football or baseball, whatever, but we're the owners of the team, okay? And we hire a coach, who is Dr. Birdsong, and we tell that coach, we want to go to the Super Bowl. And then Dr. Birdsong tells us, I know the team that we have, we can make it to the playoffs, but we can't make it to the Super Bowl, but we're gonna have check-ins with you periodically. Now, our goal is the Super Bowl, and she can, she can understand that. But I think that's where, what we need to do, and what I'm hearing from Ms. Smith and maybe Basine, and if I'm not hearing you correctly, then I apologize, but I think we do need to kind of first formulate, okay, what is it based on these discussions that we're gonna have coming up very soon? What are, what are the number one goals and priorities that we want with this school division? And then, through those goals and division, then you go back to these measures here outlined. And then she says, okay, well, I'm gonna tell you how, I'm gonna inform you, it's gonna be in our personal docket, it's gonna be through a newsletter, and it's gonna be through this specific presentation that I give you that's consistent every other month. But I think for us as the board, what we have to tell her is, these are the things that we want you to achieve. And then she tells us, yes, we can achieve it, or no, we can't, and then, and then, this is how I'm gonna do it and this is how I need you to support me in allowing this to happen. And when we evaluate her and set up those evaluation criteria, that's what we have to be very specific on. So, I'm fine if we want to go through and kind of brainstorm some things here, but I think that it would be better use of our time if we first identify proficient literacy by third grade, proficient numeracy by third grade, graduation rate of ninety percent. And then she, and then we work on the indicators here specifically, once we get those big overarching goals identified.
Okay. I'm gonna stop everyone right now. And I'm gonna tack. So, can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Move to go into executive session.
I get a second?
Question to the question, consideration of the motion.
Because I think that we have, we are, we can't have this level of conversation, so we need to have a very specific conversation about our superintendent's evaluation.
All right. I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Tanner, please call the motion.
Move that members of the school board go into a closed session for the purposes which are set out in subsection A of section 2.2-3711, Virginia Freedom of Information Act, as amended for discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees or employees of Norfolk Public Schools pursuant to subsection one of the above cited code section. The subject of this session is a discussion and consideration of the superintendent's performance for the purposes of the evaluation required in section 22.1-601, six zero point one, excuse me, of the Code of Virginia, nineteen seventy, and provisions of the superintendent's contract. Basine?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Ms. Tanner? Able to go into the conference room? Thank you. Okay. So we're gonna go over to our conference room at this time. To come out of closed session?
I move to come out of closed session.
Second. Okay. Thank you.
Who was the second?
Ms. Campson.
Okay. A resolution certifying executive meeting of the school board of the city of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas the school board of the city of Norfolk has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board of the city of Norfolk, that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore, it be resolved that the school board of the city of Norfolk hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed or considered by the school board of the city of Norfolk. Basine?
Aye.
Campson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
He said aye.
Oh, okay. I didn't hear him. Smith?
Aye.
And Martin?
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Meeting adjourned.